I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of the ground, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the town trustees. First item on the agenda is Blue Book amendments regarding buffers. Trustee Welker wanted to have a discussion on that.
President Warner would, I mean President Schultz would you like me to take attendance?
Yes, we'll take the attendance, sorry.
President Schultz?
Present.
Secretary Treasurer Welker?
Here.
Trustee Warner?
Yeah.
Trustee Pell is absent. Trustee Horowitz?
Here.
We have a quorum present this afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Pell couldn't be at the meeting today because he had some procedures to do with medical.
It has come to our attention when replacement, when bulkhead applications come in before the board, to that the opportunity exists for there to be an upgrade in the buffers. The way the language reads now is that we can have stones in a 10-foot area that's under the trustee's jurisdiction. We can have American beech grass. There can be a walkway for the length of the bulkhead. So James Durier, the environmental analyst and myself, have proposed, gone over and proposed a couple changes that we can discuss and then set a public hearing at some point in March probably. One thing we want to make sure is that behind the bulkhead, as currently exists in the Blue Book, that there's no topsoil placed when a bulkhead is replaced. The second thing would be that a landscape plan, complete with drawings and plant names, locations of the plants, and spacing must be submitted with, for that 10-foot buffer area landward of the bulkhead. And also that the buffer would consist of native and where appropriate, salt-tolerant vegetation. Stones and gravel would no longer be permitted within the buffer. That the buffer would be a no mow, no irrigate, no fertilized zone. And that there would be no pesticides applied in the buffer area. There would be a couple things that we would take a look at. The watering of the buffer would be permitted only during the first season or until the buffer is established. And that a maintenance plan for the buffer would be included when the application is submitted. So that hand-cutting and weeding of non-native invasive species would be permitted on an annual basis and would be a necessary portion of this plan as well. We would also add that this would be on a site-by-site basis. So although this would be the rule, we could look at things as necessary to be changed. So that was what I would like to propose. And I wondered what sort of...
That's a lot to digest. I think we need to digest this.
That's fine.
Yeah, I think you have to put it down in writing.
Okay.
The only one thing I'm concerned about is prohibition against any rocks. You know, in some cases where you have a lot of wave action and you have, you do have a low bulkhead, you might want some sort of riprap in front of it where it's not appropriate to put planting. But I agree with, you know, getting planting plans and creating buffers.
Well, okay. Well, what I can do is circulate what we've written and proposed. And I'm fine with adding to or deleting some aspects of it as necessary.
My first question going to counsel is, you know, is this legal? Because we're not, you know, I'm just digesting because you said a lot. People are coming in, they're not asking for anything more other than to maintain their property, their existing bulkhead. So they have to have a buffer, whether it's stone or sand. They can't put fertilizers up against that with the buffer language now. So they're coming in because their bulkhead's deteriorated, and now they're getting a whole new, a whole new thing. It's a lot, you know. I could see on a mitigation basis where somebody is asking for relief from environmental laws, where they're putting a deck in or an addition or something close to the waterway and they need to buffer that. But this is people also that just coming in with a standard-as-is in kind, changing their bulkhead, putting in all compliant materials, getting rid of creosote, getting rid of ACQ, and putting in shore guard and all our regulations. Now they're going to have to do more?
So the purpose of a buffer is to mitigate against stormwater runoff as well as primarily stormwater runoff. So the purpose of the plantings is to diminish the, is to absorb what's coming down on their lawns. And as trustees, we're responsible for the caretaking of our waterways, but we have no control over land use practices. And each of us on our own properties needs to be mindful of this. What we apply to our lawns, the things we flush down the toilet, as, you know, as uncomfortable a conversation as that is. But pharmaceuticals are a huge problem. So working towards the using native vegetation as absorption is a really important part of this. And I think with education, both on the part of the agents and ourselves for the homeowners, that this will be something that rather than having a carpet of grass right to the bulkhead, which exists in many situations now, we have to begin to shift and really change the paradigm here and realize that it's not, a monoculture isn't a sustainable practice.
Right. But we don't allow grass right to the bulkheads now. We have buffers now, sand or stone. And I agree, I like the native vegetation. But I, you know, I think that we got to be very careful with this. We have to make sure that what we're doing is legal. There's a lot of areas that we have mandated buffers, yet you go and you drive by there and they're not maintaining those buffers unfortunately. And I think a lot of it is in education, you know, with the homeowners to understand that, you know, in many instances that deep-rooted native vegetation is helpful. I just think we got to be careful with the practical application of this because sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't work. And I think we got to put a lot of thought into this so that we don't have any unintended consequences. And again, it's, you know, I just see this, yeah, you got to, we got to put this in writing and we really got to take a look at this because I could see that we may, we may create some problems here too unfortunately.
Well, I mean, 13 years of being a trustee, when I first got on the board, basically, they could dump some sand there. And, you know, Fred was always a stickler about non-topsoil and mulch, and we kept pushing it back. And we have asked for some of these site plans to be brought to us with the application so that we can basically see some grass there and some, you know, you know, like Cape American beech grass, something that doesn't need to be watered. One thing that we've got to be really cognizant of is the negative impacts of the upland that goes into our bays. I mean, we've signed on with the college and the governor, putting millions and millions of clams in the water. So what comes off of the land has to be as good a quality water that, or runoff that can be put into the water. So it has the least amount of negative effects. You've got to remember that with a bulkhead, you're basically moving up the, your lawn closer or, you know, or the effects of the human closer to the environment. Where with no bulkhead, you'll have a 50 or 75-foot natural buffer, which we're asking for a 10-foot buffer behind a bulkhead. I think if we have some good thought put into this, I think we can come up with a long-term plan that would satisfy our needs and the environment's needs.
Yeah, I think what's important also is that there's no ambiguity. I think people, when they apply for a permit in the Blue Book, they should know exactly what the requirements are.
I think that's what we want to do.
Yeah, right now it's sand or stone or what have you. And there are people that have applied. And that's not bad. You know, they're still providing a buffer. They're not mowing. They're not putting fertilizers in those areas. They are taking out the creosote. They are taking out, you know, the ACQ. They're putting in compliant material. They're utilizing the Greenheart, you know. Next town over, they're not doing this, right? You got one street over and they're not putting that same material. And so we're, I think we're like ahead of the curve on the environmental side with our projects.
We're better property managers.
I think so. I think we've done a good job with that. I think we just need to make sure that it's run legally, appropriately, if challenged.
That's why we're bringing it to this work session so we can come with the ideas and put it into a nice practical...
I have a rough draft that was given to me by trustee Welker, and I'll go through and legalize it, make it more palatable and understandable, to make it as straightforward as possible. I do think there will, just off the top of my head, there is a way to make this happen. But I would say not necessarily requiring somebody to make the change if they're replacing a bulkhead, but if they aren't going to be making any changes to the buffer itself, maybe that's the time that you can have a new requirement, much like in pre-existing use.
Yeah, but still what Ed was saying is that they, they put the bulkhead at the interface, which would naturally be vegetated anyway. And I think it's incumbent on the shorefront owners to do their part to, to reduce the amount of any type of deleterious substance that comes into the water. So some sort of filter has to be established.
The only time that we have the opportunity to make any sort of, yeah, upgrade to buffers is when bulkheads are replaced. Otherwise, they can mow straight to the edge.
Well, no, they're really not supposed to, well, I mean, a lot of them have buffers in there. They're not supposed to. The problem is, a lot of people, you know, what's important is the education and the public buy-in. And that's where it has to be practical and sensible. If people don't buy into it, then they eliminate it and it doesn't work. There are many applications, I'm sure, on maybe even conservation board where people did certain activities. They got relief from the town code. They needed to provide mitigation of a buffer, and they're not maintaining that. And now they've, you know, they've got relief from the law, but they're not providing the protection for the waterway. So I think whatever we do, it has to be practical and sensible so that it works. You guys can ride up and down the canals like I do with the boat, and you see that some people and a lot of people are violating this law.
But I think we have an opportunity here, not only to stay ahead of the curve as far as our stewardship of the environment, both the land and the trustee's environment, but also to educate people, to let them know that this native vegetation that they'd be planting would, could really make a difference.
That's really the only way that it would effectively work is if they, they take an ownership interest in that. Because then they'll be good stewards of that. And we can't be stewards of their property. They have to be stewards of their property, right? They have to maintain these things, and that's how it works. If they don't, then it doesn't, it doesn't work. So the education is like a very important component. And everybody recognizing the fact that they need to take, you know, an ownership interest in seeing policies that will create better water quality. And I think that, you know, everybody's got to be sensible and practical relative to the whole thing. And that's how it could work.
I think, though, in many circumstances at this point, there is, we've hit a tipping point for people to, that are not only educating themselves. I attended a landscapers forum that was sponsored by the Lake Agua Conservancy a couple weeks ago at Southampton Art Center. There were 150 landscapers there that were educating themselves about moving away from their traditional type of landscaping to organic methods that would not only benefit the land, but also the water that many of them are abutting. So, and the landscapers were, they weren't on their phones. They weren't, they weren't laughing and talking. They were paying attention and they were riveted. So it was very hopeful. And I really think that we have hit a tipping point.
Well, as I've said before, you know, nature has a tremendous way of healing itself, but we have to stop the impacts to it to let it, let it do its job. So this will be one step in the right direction. But we have to maintain some flexibility because there is some, there are some canals that this just doesn't work in. So if there's some flexibility built into the law, that's what we need.
Site-by-site basis.
Right. That's why we got, yeah, we got to be really careful. And it's got to be practical and sensible.
Right. So why don't you, you know, make copies for the rest of the board members who mark them up, and then we can have a discussion on it and set up a public hearing.
And you also have to separate the commercial and residential properties too. Because what goes on in a commercial property can sometimes be different than a residential property with parking, machinery use and such. So we have to take that into consideration.
And you got to, you got to let Rich Harris, attorney, do his due diligence. Because you're regulating non-trust property. We're trustees of a trust, and this is property that's not part of that trust. It's outside of it.
Jurisdiction over 10-foot.
Well, let, well...
I'll work with trustee Welker to come up and say, if challenged, that meets all his criteria.
He's got to make sure that, you know, if challenged, that it stands up. Otherwise, it's not.
That's why I think we should all give our comments and ideas, and we can put it into a nice package so we can make it work for each one of our areas too.
Well, yeah. And then it's going to have to go to, obviously, public hearings.
Yes, that's why we're...
And the reason for the 10-foot is not because it's, maybe the bulkhead might be only six or eight inches wide, but it's all supporting structures, the dead men and tie rods that hold that and make it strong. So that's why we have that 10-foot.
If anybody has any particular issues or thoughts you have, send it over to me. Someone will work on a draft that we can all work through. And I'll incorporate the best I can and hopefully come up with the ordinance that most people will be in agreement with by the time we get to the public hearing.
Okay, great.
See, now we have applications that we held up the last go-around that met the Blue Book in terms of the buffer language that's there now. So how are we handling that?
I think they should move forward because we're reviewing them on the criteria at which time they were submitted. What we're going to do is look at this and make this regulation for the future, once we have the public hearing.
I have applications that are already before the board. I'll submit to the code of the Blue Book as it stands right now.
Correct.
That would be called next to the spot.
Yeah, I mean, I think you got to be fair with people.
And this is going to be a little bit of a process to change this. But looking forward to...
Thank you for starting us in this direction.
All right. We'll work on it together.
Great. Now, the next item you had was on kayak racks. Who was going to talk about that?
I could start because, you know...
You were, you were talking to East Hampton about this already, right?
Yes, I had spoken to one of the trustees in East Hampton. I've also spoken to some of the residents about accessing the water with their kayaks and paddleboards and the ability to leave them on a permitted trustee structure at one of our road ends or one of our facilities. I think it will allow the public a much easier ability to, you know, to use the waters. There are several places throughout the town that I had thought that it would be a good start to, on. But I think, oh, Kirsten Beachdale, being that we've had issues in the past with people haphazardly storing their kayaks, paddleboards, and other stuff, I really think that if we did something there or in Cold Springs Pond, where we could set up a nice rack system and have a fair charge to the public for a year of use, and have them, you know, marked with the specific stickers. This way, if someone finds one of these paddleboards floating in the bay, we know who it belongs to. Or if someone fell off of it, then we would know the owner of it, and the bay constables could contact and see if someone was in trouble or something. It's accountability for, you know, these, you know, vessels that are used around our waters.
East Hampton has, at this point, four different locations that they have kayak racks. And they have 130 people that, or 130 paddleboards or kayak racks that they've, they started with a couple, and they've rolled it out over the last several years. And speaking with the secretary for the board of the East Hampton trustees, she said people have loved it, that it's tightened up some of the areas where there was disarray or confusion with boards and kayaks on the ground, and that it's been very successful.
So I think we should come up with a proposal, a couple, one or two specific areas, the amount that would be charged, the length of the season, and what the, would accommodate as far as, you know, paddleboard, kayak, or canoe, whichever was going to be placed there, and how to configure the racks in a way that we could get them set up and moving forward on this.
For this summer.
This summer.
Yeah.
Okay. Can our attorney, then, can you speak to the East Hampton town attorney about liabilities or, you know, the whole mechanism of what they have?
And also the matter of procurement of this too, and how it's going to be built.
And I think you have a personal knowledge of these kayak racks and...
I've built a few myself.
So this should be, this should be good for the public.
So agreed.
That's a lot of fun.
Yes.
Okay. So we have a item on there for fish trap, fike applications for determination. And you're handling this?
Yes, Jess is going to, Jessica Glesky is going to discuss this, please.
The applicant just walked in the door, so.
All right.
Okay.
So...
You have to identify your name for the record.
Aaron Rozie.
Thank you.
And sign in.
So Aaron submitted for fish trap and fike applications back in the middle of January. And I sat with him, reviewed them. It looked like he had everything. Everything looks good. I sent it over to the bay constables, and they all, they said that everything is in compliance. It all looks good. So this is the first one, fish trap 339. This is the first proposed one. It's a fike actually, I'm sorry. And it's in Mecocks, the southeast Mecocks, mouth of Sam's Creek. It's just left. So that's the first one. The second one, 340, is in, also in Mecocks, mouth of Hay Ground Cove. The other two are in Sag Harbor Cove. So 342 is in southeast corner of Upper Sag Harbor Cove. That's that one. Can you go to the next one, James? And then this one is mouth of Morris Cove. So those are the four that are proposed. And the bay constables were good with it, so.
Okay, so move it forward then?
Okay.
This is the first time that you're putting these here?
Yes.
Okay. And how long do they stay in? When do you put them in? When do you take them out?
I, usually a spring and fall, winter. I mean, depending on how rough the winter gets. I mean, obviously, I'm not going to fish them with ice because ice will destroy them. But mainly targeting white perch, eels, black-backed flounder. That's pretty much it.
But they're out during the summer when?
Yes.
Okay.
I was, I was actually, the question for the trustees was, is there any regulatory season or dates?
Yes.
There is.
There is. It's in the Blue Book.
If I could get, yeah, if I could get...
Yes, it's in the Blue Book.
I don't know the exact date.
Is it in the Blue Book, Jess?
Yeah, I guess I can copy it for you.
Yeah, it's hound and fikes both. It should be out. I think it's before 4th of July, end of June?
Right, right.
We have given, we have given extensions, but not in the last couple of years.
Okay.
Just for boat traffic and...
Navigational issues.
People can bring with it as well.
Are you going to have these marked with red flags on each end similar to a gill net so that boat, boat traffic can acknowledge that they're there? And we should have it on a map in our office?
GPS.
Delineating?
Do you have the GPS?
Okay, delineating any?
Yep, and then we'll add it to the GIS portal.
Well, I could do signboard, does, like the pound traps, you know?
Yeah, that would probably be appropriate if you have a...
Post with, you know, the numbers and codes or whatever, you know, to put on it with my name.
So between June 30th and Labor Day, they can't be in the water. So, yeah, I need a copy of this code when we need permits.
Yeah, we moved it up from the 15th to the 30th.
Yeah, yes.
All right, okay.
Okay.
So we're advancing those, Dan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Jess.
Thank you, Jess.
Thank you, Jessica.
Okay, let's move into the public portion. Does anybody from the public have any issues that they want to bring up today?
Do we have public portion at work session?
Oh, I would like to, if anybody's here.
I don't think we do. We don't. It's not on the agenda. Yeah, we generally don't.
Okay, well, it seems that nobody wants to speak anyway, so, okay.
It's usually on Monday.
All right. No, I know, but I thought I'd open it up and see a lot of people here.
Thank you for doing that.
All right. C-Tuck 5 LLC, we'll move into the general permit applications that I'm handling. C-Tuck 5 LLC, second renewal on South Bay Avenue in Eastport. That's Hampton Watercraft. That's been handled by trustee Welker for a while. You didn't have any problems with the second renewal, right?
No, not at all.
So we'll move to, put the, move that...
Nothing's changed. It's...
No, nothing's changed.
Okay.
Runs a good operation.
Okay. Michael Housman is a modifications, 47 Pearson Road, Flanders. Anybody get for that application? Okay. All right. Well, this has been brought up before, I take it, last year?
Yes. This is a modification to the permit because DEC wanted the catwalk extended. We're actually, we're going to hold this just for now because we're waiting for comments back from the environmental division because of where the jurisdiction is. The property has been flagged to show where the catwalk is because it was kind of hard to tell. There are a lot of fragmities here.
Right.
And there is a paper road there, but this does not in any way impede the paper road, nor is that road open. So, and it doesn't, it's not, it's outside of the paper road, the catwalk is.
Right. The only question I've had is, so I haven't had, been in discussions for two years, so I see that they're, they're still talking about now four foot above the marsh now. Are they still holding to that now again?
Yes, yeah.
That's a reverted back to elevated catwalks again?
Yes. They're, actually, they want them 54 inches most times.
Yeah, the problem is, it says proposed elevated minimum four feet above grade, and then it says no railings. And last time I knew, anything that was four foot had to have railings as far as the state code, the building inspector. So, you know, for liability issues, whalling off the thing. So that effectively puts it even higher now. So maybe we should have a discussion with the DEC about this when we talk about...
Well, it wasn't the DEC that we had the...
Army Corps too.
The Army Corps. And we sent them multiple backup documents, and they said, no.
They wanted research done, peer-reviewed research that proved that with, that plantings would grow underneath if we were to lower the height of the catwalk.
We sent a lot of, right? We had a lot of examples.
Wasn't the original research that they did was based on Florida?
Correct. It was not, it was not in our area.
Puerto Rico, Puerto Rico. Yes, I had the original document, which I circulated to the board. It had nothing to do with anything in the Northeast.
Right. But our, our research that we sent them was, you know, obviously local.
But it was not adequate for them, Eric.
Well, maybe we could, maybe the...
It made too much sense.
Multiple applications for a year and longer. And then basically, they sent, well, James, would you like to address this? Because, you know...
Yeah, maybe you should.
We tried.
If you had any additional comments on that.
Familiar with the process that we tried to go through and resolve and basically be consistent with what we had done in the past?
We tried.
Yeah, we sent them, I think, 12 examples of low, low catwalks that were about two and a half to three feet above vegetation with clearly vegetation, wetland vegetation flourishing underneath it. And they, they didn't check their eyes. They just said, no, sorry, we need to get more research done.
And a couple of catwalks actually had it growing through.
Yeah, it was actually growing through.
So, right.
It's like they didn't want to do any work.
Cut the smart time and it was going through it.
And we sent examples from several different waterways in several different areas throughout the town.
Most of them are beyond the river.
Sag Harbor, Southampton.
Did a good job putting that together.
Yeah.
With, you know, the permits that we, we gave and DEC attached permits.
Yeah, Eric, the DEC was agreeable to what we were giving. They were on our side, but the Army Corps seems to have a different philosophy. And we got in a, stuck in a battle with them. And we got in a, stuck in a battle with them.
Things have changed though at Army Corps with some of the personnel, so maybe we could try again?
Yeah, you can, I don't know, I was talking to the DEC yesterday and they said they're having problems with the Army Corps now, so.
I think it really depends on what they, what they use as their criteria towards this. So like the research that they have, that was dated, you know, eighties or whatever, nineties when it was.
In the nineties, Jim Walker had documented, given it to us.
Puerto Rico and Florida, that's what they're going with, that's their criteria, that's what they're using, that's what they're.
Well, we're having a meeting with the, with the head of the DEC and maybe we can get the DEC to help us do, compile the data so we can change this around because these, these are pretty unsightly. I think what we did in the Spion River looks great because in the summertime you can't even see these, you know.
That was the reason we.
Right.
We took a big swing at that.
But then, you know, the DEC has got to modify it a little bit too because we had proposed putting these walkways in the drainage ditches. And I see now it's moved over from the drain, so there wouldn't be the issue with the Army Corps. If it was relocated into the drainage ditch, then it could be lower.
Yeah, because it would be like a water land.
Two agencies, you know. If we can move them into putting it into the drainage ditches, then maybe we can reduce the size of this.
This property is completely fragmities, just saying now.
So this is going on hold?
Yes, okay.
Didn't we review this already and?
Yeah, it's relocated now.
Oh, so now they wanted to amend it to move, okay, okay.
Holding the modification.
It's pulled down to the end of the property and elongated.
Because we were trying to see if there could be a natural path.
Yes.
So it wouldn't have to be as long.
Yes.
And.
Well, that's, that's an old deposition area for when they dredge Reeves's Bay. So you're not going across pristine wetlands there, it's basically a spoil site with fragmities growing out of it. So, you know, it's, it's not your typical wetlands.
Right. Okay, so it's on hold, so next is Ed's.
Forty-eight Newtown Road Corporation, Hampton Watercraft, forty-eight Newtown Road. It's a second renewal, nothing has changed. They're basically taking out some of the standing docks and putting some floats in. So we approved it last time, nothing has changed, so I'd like to move it ahead if everybody's okay with it.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Do you want to look at it, Eric?
No, I'm okay.
Okay.
Next one is DG C Realty LLC, modification, three sixty-nine Beach Road, Hampton Bays. This is the old Pell's Dock, they're looking to, we, we had issued a permit, but now they're coming back. They're trying to basically, this is what they're asking for do. They're reconstructing a hundred and forty-five feet of linear bulkhead, functional bulkhead, eight to fourteen feet landward of the existing bulkhead. Basically, they're taking the bulkhead that's there now, they're going to take it out and they're going to move it landward, creating more underwater lands on their property. Reconstruct twenty-six linear feet of existential functional bulkhead, eighteen inches of existing building foundation. So they're pulling it back on the north end and to the, within eighteen inches of the existing building foundation. Construct ninety linear feet of new bulkhead within eighteen inches of the existing functional bulkhead. They're actually putting this in front of the old bulkhead on their property. And maintenance dredge ten by forty area on the southwest portion of the marina to the medium depth of six feet below mean low water. De-water dredge material on site and then place dredge material in a low area on the site. All authorized activities must be done in strict compliance with the attached plan stamped, New York State DEC approved, one thirteen, two thousand. So here's the area map, the work that they're proposing. This is the area that they're taking, they're going to, eighteen inches in front here, eighteen inches in front here, but they're going to pull this bulkhead back here. Fourteen feet and this back here, eight feet, so basically they're moving the whole bulkhead over.
So they're extending the dimensions of the bulkhead?
They're underwater lands, they're increasing it, they own the underwater lands in this particular area, so. Here's some of the pictures of the site right now. This is the current site conditions with the new proposed bulkhead overlaid it, of it. This is the arch that's here right now is the area that's going to be removed and bulkheaded, moved back between fourteen and eight feet. And this is the, this is another, same as that, details.
So they're not, they're not putting new bulkhead in, they're moving existing.
Well, they're, they're going to put a new bulkhead in, they're going to rip out the old bulkhead, rip out all the asphalt and all the stuff within that area, within this area here. And they're going to take a new lot, pure line of bulkhead back between eight and, eight feet to fourteen feet back from the original. Increasing, basically it's for a commercial dock for the large boats to get in, so they can pack out here and also get ice and fuel. Right now, only boats that can get in there are boats that are under forty feet because it's very shallow here. And this bulkhead is all falling over, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say that they weren't installing new. What I was saying was they are not adding to what's already there, but rather relocating.
They're reloco, well, yeah, they're moving it landward of the pre-existing bulkhead.
Creating more underwater land.
Creating more underwater land so that boats can get in here and pack out. Right now, it's a very, very tight area for any of the boats that they have the spaces over, over here to get in, navigate in and out of here.
With somebody pulled up?
Yes, if you're docked, if you're docked here because I packed out here, the boats can't come and go out of here. So you have to basically wait until this boat offloads. So by moving it over fourteen feet, then you'll have two-way traffic flow.
Ability.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Are we advancing that, Ed?
Yes. The next application is for Bar, Barson Maria, Shaw, Zat, forty-one Far Pond Road, Southampton.
Can I pass this?
Yes.
This is foremost for now.
The applicant is proposing replacing the existing dock to be replaced with a light penetrating, penetratable decked dock supported by untreated wood post as requested by the conservation board. Basically, they're taking the dock that's there, the catwalk, and they're replacing the decking and what's there with a untreated lumber and light penetrating decking.
So they're re-decking it?
Yes, and, and the, and the posts, right, James, they're, they're replacing the dock that's there.
Okay, can I need the?
The catwalk.
They're replacing the decking of the, of the existing dock that they have a permit for. There is on the survey, you can see that there was an extra float. And I was in contact with Mr. Zats and he said that he is removing that.
See that?
You know, because it doesn't have a permit for that extra one, but the old permit does have the, you know, the straight dock. So he said that he will remove that. You know, I suggest that you guys maybe put a condition on saying that you won't get a compliance unless that's removed. But when, when they go to do the site visit.
There's also a picture of a jet ski dock on the end of that dock, so.
That's what I'm saying, that they're removing.
And there's also a double jet ski dock on the north side of it. There was a floating dock.
Yeah, you got a double jet ski.
Yeah, that's going to be removed.
And then there's another picture with a jet ski bulkhead. There's a third picture.
Right here.
With another float.
So he's got, he's way out.
It has to go back to the original.
He's way out of spec.
See, this is illegal and this is illegal, so the only thing that is permitted is the.
Six, one, straight, straight float.
It's not a six, what is it, about a twelve by six or something like, it's a.
I think the plans are in the, the old permit, it might be in the other folder.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for now. No, they're not in here. So my, my question is, as requested by the conservation board, what does Marty have to do with the jurisdiction of this dock?
Or? He might have like the upland area of the dock.
But it's all connected and they're coming to us. So my question is, why is he, why are they looking at here? All right, I got it, no, it just has the permit numbers, it doesn't have the size of the docks, James.
Wants the trustees to take jurisdiction out of it, it's all on.
Yes.
There's a permit issued by the conservation board, January seventh.
Because of the house?
Yes, we're growing a lot of other items, the paver ramp, shed, concrete retaining walls, concrete slab, fire pit, fence lines, driveway.
How big a buffer did they mandate?
Probably the usual seventy-five.
So, Jane.
Non-treated, seventy-five feet of wetlands.
James, right now this dock is, is legal?
Six by sixteen.
Yeah, okay, so, okay, so everything that's there, other than the two jet ski floats, is going to remain? And the catwalk is going to be replaced with light penetrating decking and any of the poles are going to be replaced with non-treated lumber, right?
Yeah, I would, I would say so.
Yes.
I think that you guys should put a condition on there that they would have to remove that to get the compliance.
Yes, the, the jet ski float that is on there now has to be removed.
This has to be.
If they're not compliant, do we have to put a condition on it or we just say they're not compliant, don't give them there?
If they're not compliant, they could be violated.
Yeah, you're not compliant, you're not compliant.
Yeah, we already have the force mechanism placed under chapter one eleven.
Yeah.
So you want them to remove it before you give the permit, is that what you're saying?
Is it still in there right now? I didn't look.
I'm not sure, I've got to go.
I thought we had something in effect where you had to take care of all the violations before a permit was issued.
Yes.
Yeah, it's got to go.
To you guys.
Have you been at this site since we've gotten this application?
No, I haven't.
I will take a ride there on this afternoon and let you know if the dock is still there. If it's still there, then we're going to hold the permit until everything is cleaned up, okay?
So we're holding for now, Ed?
Yeah, we're going to hold for now, until everything is cleaned up down there.
Because there's nobody here for the application, right? Okay.
You want to just have her come up, just to let her know, to let her client know?
Yeah, why don't you come up and talk about this while you're here, save some time. Did you listen to the conversation about the non-compliant?
I did.
Is it still there, has it been removed? You don't know?
Okay.
Okay.
I really just have surface knowledge, I'm here on behalf of Pam Blazer, who's out of town.
So you just have to state your name for the record.
Oh, Eileen McWilliams.
Yes, hi.
So you're, you're okay with the rest of the project except for to clean up the violations?
The jetski dock.
So you can transmit that to your client or your friend?
Needs to be removed by, before the permit is issued and can't be replaced, it needs to get a permit for it. Or go through an app, submit an application.
And the owner can call me, I can explain to them more.
Probably.
That'd be best. With this with her? Have the owner call James, he can explain.
Or Pam, have you been in contact with Pam or with?
Of course.
Of course, okay.
Yeah, that's who, you know, he confirmed by email that he would remove it, so. But they, they want to make sure that it's gone before they give the permit, so.
Yes.
That's fine.
Great, cool.
Very good, thanks.
Thank you, to see Eileen.
All right, I have.
Okay then.
One more, Lighthouse Road and Management LLC, two thirty-two Lighthouse Road, Hampton Bays, DKR Shores.
Hey Gina.
Hi.
How you doing Gina?
Hello Gina.
Good, better.
Good.
Good, you too.
This is a commercial establishment on Schinacock Bay, it's right by the Coast Guard Station, actually on the other, Western Schinacock Bay. The applicant proposes to reconstruct and place a hundred and forty-two feet of bulkhead with vinyl up to thirteen inches higher. Install a new ten-foot vinyl return, backfill with approximately fifty cubic yards to install a four by a hundred and forty-two foot boardwalk to establish a stone buffer, non-turf, ten-foot area land where the bulkhead, all material to be non-treated.
Good afternoon, Gina, here for Rigdon, here for DKR Shores.
Thank you.
To represent Pam.
Wolfert.
Wolfert and.
Colette Connor.
Colette Connor, Lighthouse Road Management LLC. I was asked, I believe in an email from James, if Mr. Warner requested that the, both the walkway be cut back. So we went a little back and forth with that, I understand what you're trying to do. I try to design every project individually because each site is completely different. Residential versus commercial, also completely different. Existing versus proposed, I could go on and on about what, you know, vegetation in certain places, walkway and rock in other places are sometimes necessary. The rock is actually necessary occasionally. So he didn't have a problem with the rock, the walkway he wanted you to cut back. We know that this, everyone knows where the site is, right? Okay, if anyone has ever been there, especially Wednesday night, music by the bay, food truck. I personally have had experience, you know, when you have a little sundress and, you know, you walk in and you want to eat your lobster roll or whatever, delicious foods in that food truck. There's nowhere to sit, so I sat at the bulkhead, which is collapsing and dangerous. And as you could see in the photographs, there are stink holes and pretty much liability. This project needs to be done, we need to resolve this today because the work needs to be done before season. This is a very busy establishment, they are productive in the community. They are an addition to the tourism out here. They are basically what the Hamptons should want to be, laid back, easygoing and available. So the issue I have with cutting the walkway back is, as you know, to the southeast, they rent paddle boards and there's a little establishment going on over there, must have a walkway over there. The walkway in the front, there's nowhere to sit, they need to be able to put like Adirondack chairs or have people sit on the bulkhead and not get their sundress dirty. The rock absolutely necessary, as you can see from the photographs, it's a very low bulkhead, it washes over continuously. And I'm just going to mark the line where you can see the water comes over continually on a basis and this is winter. So rock necessary, walkway for commercial, for aesthetics, for safety in a commercial establishment. That is a restaurateur and an inn that's very well traveled. I'm requesting respectfully that we are allowed to put the walkway at a full length. I would add plants if I could, I can't, they're going to get trampled.
How often does it flood there?
Pretty much every storm we get.
All the time, a lot of times.
I mean, this is why the damage is there, it's.
I mean, this is why the damage is there. It's every single storm.
And you guys got wiped out in Sandy, right? And Irene, too?
Yeah, concealed, like everyone.
This, this needs to be done and it needs to be done.
We had to already replace the, um, the dock that goes out into the water and we used all the compliant materials and did a good job on that and, you know.
Pam, we also discussed, and I brought this up when I originally, you retained me, she actually is okay with the through flow.
Yeah, I mean, we have that on the thing. The other thing is the, uh, the Trex decking or whatever it is. It's all like plastic or safe or whatever.
If you make the spaces a little wider, the water tends to go through it.
You can't make the spaces a little wider on Trex decking because they're specifically designed to be less than three-eighths of an inch. I went through this with a few people when they built docks and, or decks and they're very, they're almost non-existing spacing. And when you get in an extremely heavy rain and it's pitched towards the bay, it runs in. That's why we ask for three-eighth spacing on our deck boards. So that way it would give you some bit of a surface so the water to run down beyond the bulkhead and then go into the bay. But the, the Trex decking, I, I've dealt with it a few times and I have friends of mine have put it on decks and it's very, very tight. So your high heels don't get stuck in it basically. And the best would be the light penetrating through flow decking, which again, you're not gonna walk on with heels because, but it does do the right thing. It allows the water to go very quickly through it, permeate very quickly through it. And also it doesn't uplift during a tidal surge. It's not quite as buoyant as or has as much space to get lifted. It works very well. So I mean.
So, I mean, if that would be.
And that product comes into, I think it's four, five and six foot wide.
They wanted to shorten this.
Section, so you can, you know.
There'll be enough space with the cap.
What was the problem there? We're trying to figure out.
What's wrong?
Well, I was asking to get some grass there, being that it's an extensive piece of property. It's, uh, you know, there's a lot of grass between the bulkhead and the houses and I was hoping to have a little bit of root system there on the edge of the bulkhead just to absorb some of the nutrients that, you know, get on the lawn.
Well, they're also talking about raising it too, right?
Yes.
Thirteen inches high after majesty Jason Balka.
Yeah, and you got a six-foot stone, non-turf buffer there, right?
Which is needed desperately because.
Is your, is your project blue book compliant the way this is proposed now?
You know, I, you know, this is one of the examples of where you need, where you have a shorter bulkhead. Lot of tidal action and you need those, that, proposing putting that gray surge stone, the trap rock type thing that, that locks in. Not, that's not, not pebbles. Pebbles are not gonna work.
I have specified that with the contractor, but she can most certainly discuss that with him.
You know, similar to the.
It's almost like a chink stone. Do you know what it?
No, not familiar, I'm sorry.
You look at a railroad bed, the blue stone that's there, it's not round and polished. It's, has multiple sides on it and basically when it settles in, it locks in. When you get an overwash and the wave action, it doesn't roll up and you want.
Otherwise you'd be like a three-quarter rack.
If you put half and three-quarter inch piece stone there, it.
It'll go, it'll be in the water.
Be in the water all the time.
So a larger stone. I mean, I like the look of the rounder stone. I, I understand.
It's easier to walk on.
It's easier to walk on because no one's gonna wanna walk on the chink stone. Do you know what I mean?
But you are coming up thirteen inches, you say?
Just to match them.
Right, so that would eliminate some of your, you know, in a, in a major storm like Irene or Sandy, all bets are off.
That'll, yeah.
All bets are off.
It'll help. I mean, a new bulkhead with the stone, you know, reinforced.
But for practical use on a regular basis for a, you know, a resort, commercial type, you know, you're, you're buffering, you're using compliant material, you know. If there was areas that you could have some form of a planting or something someplace to help, whatever. You know, but I think you guys have met the blue book. You have.
That's my next question because the way, because you have a, you're talking about a four by, uh, four foot wide by a hundred and forty-two and then a ten-foot area behind that? Or is it gonna be a six, six foot?
Six foot.
Okay, so you're talking ten total.
Ten total.
Ten total.
Yeah, I just.
I just wanna make sure because the way it's worded here, it looks like you're giving up fourteen feet.
And you would do light penetrative? You would do the light penetrative or you're not doing that?
I hadn't even gone there with the contractor to decide on the material.
Well, whatever is placed there and we've done, we've asked this for some of the people along Shinnecock Hills, when they, they actually have to, I would ask to have some kind of cement sonotubes put in for, you know, basically structure. So when you bolt your deck or decking to it, it doesn't lift up and float away.
Yeah, it's a, and then.
It's a really.
Like J-bolt, where it actually holds the deck. So if a storm comes up, it won't take the decking with it. So it's, I have, that's usually in my specifics, but we do in high-velocity areas like a J-bolt system. And, yeah, it's actually, oh, that looks good. So you can see the concrete. Puddings. And I don't have the bolts here, but.
Gina, there is a bulkhead here that goes perpendicular or diagonal to. Who's, who owns this bulkhead?
It's actually on the adjacent personal, either they're not.
Okay, cause I was just wondering if there's any.
You know, there's.
We would love, but it's not us.
Okay.
They would love to do something with that, but it's not that.
Since we bought the place, we wanted to. They, it was just always Pete Charles and then the new people bought it.
Okay.
So it's just gonna.
There was a little dug canal here at one point that they used to keep boats in way back when.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, that's why, that's why it's like that. It's completely filled in.
You don't wanna reference you, so.
Learn something every day. So anyway, it's pretty standard. It's blue book compliant. You know, it's an asset to the community. They're doing the right thing. They're running all the shit.
That's why I had sent an email to you and with you through James just to see what your thoughts and possibility.
Right, I always try to encourage people, you know, to do plants. It's cheaper than, than decking. But in this particular case, I mean, there's no other option.
And I've seen some of your projects. You do a very nice job. So it's, you get deep rooted. You do a good job with that. But you gotta be practical and sensible for this application.
Yeah.
Is that a lot higher?
That's it right here.
Yes, I'm a tree hugger, but you know, you have to.
That's it right here.
Is that a substantially vegetated place thing now? It looks like it.
It's thirteen inches.
I know what I'm saying. There's a lot of vegetation on there.
Yes.
It's, it's, it's an option to go up there.
That was my idea, but it's also.
Now, how's that gonna work with the grade of the existing property at thirteen?
I don't think we're going up there.
And we don't have any blue book.
It'll be, we'll, we'll just.
I was asking.
Oh, okay.
You know, it's my recommendation. He would just have to link it to me.
That's why we had the discussion.
Oh, I understand.
So you have an option to go. By the time you actually.
Kinda defeats my rationale, you know, that, you know, lower areas.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah, because you don't, you know, you don't wanna have a big wall.
This is.
Exactly.
Right, you don't want a big wall and your grade is not, cause in the.
This here, during Sandy, there was probably a crack in the water.
Let's have one conversation. Let's have one conversation.
Yeah, so it's, it's up to thirteen inches.
Cause what you're saying.
You may only do six inches. This is you.
Yeah, just to keep it basically so it looks the same.
Yeah. We also realized during Sandy, there was four feet of water on this property or more, so.
The devastation we saw at Sandy was just indescribable.
Big storm, all bets are off.
You know, it's just, I'm still doing Sandy work now. Still, on the sound everywhere.
So are we gonna move this ahead as proposed?
I would like to.
Are we good with it?
Well, let's discuss it for a minute here about the vegetation next door.
Yes.
So.
Your next door neighbor has a bulkhead that's thirteen inches high and this is where my mindset came for grass because it's a very nice, you know, example of what should be.
Oh, I see.
On the, uh, in the buffer zone.
See, what I was saying is that the lower bulkheads have the rock behind them because there's so much wave action. But if you raise it up to thirteen, you have a bulkhead that's right next door that has, it's heavily vegetated. So it's not impacting it.
But theirs is a commercial.
It's a commercial. We need the, it's gotta be viable for people walking around in high heels and drinks and eating sandwiches.
You can't destroy, you can't, you can't destroy the.
They're not gonna be able to walk on that, on that.
Yeah, they will. They'll walk on it. It's not that, it's not that bad. And then they'll take their shoes off. They at least, they do anyway.
They always take their shoes off.
They take their shoes off.
Yeah, I would say the question.
From a bigger angle. Yeah, yeah, I've been there. I've been on the same. I've been down there on Wednesdays.
Yeah, I mean, it's such a great spot and I wanna.
Do you wanna work on it?
Undercover though, undercover though.
I wouldn't be able to sit on the.
Question is, does it meet the blue book regulations?
No, it does, Scott, it does. When I went through it initially, but I thought I would ask because I'm always asking.
It's always good to, it is good to try and whatever, but then there's the practicality end of it from the landowner's perspective.
And if I could, I would say, yeah, I could do it.
I know you would, cause you've done that.
Like what's over here and it's less traveled and, you know, or the client doesn't wanna spend the money or rather do the grass. I would absolutely encourage it, but here I'm like really, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but no.
What about over at, on the sort of northern section?
Where the cottages are?
Near the cottages?
You know, I'd love that too, but.
What if you rolled back the, uh, the buffer in the walkway there and planted at least there? And did a ten-foot buffer?
I think it would be a little bit more palatable if you, if you did say a section from, from the, from the walkway over to the edge of the property line.
Because that's our cottages there and that's rented out, you know, all season long.
That makes a lot of money, so now you're obstructing.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not talking about there. I'm talking, I mean, down here between the dock and the next property owner.
That's where the paddleboard.
On the north side or the south side?
That's where the paddleboard company.
They need, we need access to the water there.
I mean, you guys are.
And that has to be.
It's own waterfront business.
Are you fertilizing over there and pesticides and all this stuff?
No, that grass is like brown.
So I mean, you got, you know, I mean, it's really.
We're already, you know, getting rid of the crap that's there basically, you know, and doing.
Okay.
Trying to do the right thing and it will be an asset as is.
Regulated, we would. Right.
This is a classic example. I mean, these guys have done everything they could do and they meet the law and they're trying to operate what we need in our community and that's a nice establishment like this.
One quick thought is, um, I see you have the flow through decking and your six-foot stone, but I don't see any path through the stone where you can walk either to access the dock or to access the paddleboard. You're gonna be crossing over all of these rocks. Are you gonna have a, a small walkway across here?
I don't think so. They can walk on the rock.
I hadn't thought about it for it.
Well, it depends what type of rocks you put there. Because if you put these larger chink stones, you're not gonna walk on them. They're not gonna be around.
I think it'd be a bit smaller stone, like a five to six inch random, probably a beach stone.
All I'm just saying is saying, I know walking on, uh, rocks with bare feet of flip flops, it could be a little bit.
It could go up like.
The paddleboard is just for insurance reasons. They all wear beach shoes of some form.
Yeah. Rocks you can definitely walk on, but that won't, you know, float away. So up to eight inches, I would say, miss.
So the cottages are eight feet off the property line?
Right, and that's considerably close to a structure for an erosion control flood device. I just, the cottages need to not only have water view.
Could you do a garden for those eight feet? With native vegetated plantings right on the property line?
I would really prefer the walkway because the cottages need to be able to access and use.
The cottages from what I'm, from what I'm, from what I'm seeing here, the cottages, this would not impact the view nor would it impact the access. The, this is just eight feet off the property line, so it would come right to the edge of.
Do you know what she was talking about?
I don't, no, I don't.
She's talking right here.
Here's the one right here? Yeah, so then the person who has.
Meet the blue book.
This is what we call number nine. It is our most valuable piece of property. We get like three times what we charge everybody else. Then they would not be able to walk on that?
And these people have, you know, there, there's no vegetation on this side. I mean, the vegetation they're talking about on that raised up one is way over here. This neighbor, you know.
I'm sorry.
Has nothing there. So I don't think that's really gonna be beneficial, eight feet. I think it's just.
I really don't think it's gonna benefit and it's.
So what are we, what are we accomplishing?
Talking about coming this way essentially.
It's gonna look silly to have a board where it's.
You're getting rid of the, the old material. You're cleaning up, you're putting all compliant. You're putting a buffer in, you're not fertilizing. I think you guys have.
Everything that's been proposed is coming in ten feet this way.
I think it's beneficial improvement.
So when it goes across this way.
I think, I think what you've done is sensible and I think that we've got protections for the bay with a stone buffer and with the proper materials and where you're, you're pushed off by ten feet.
Why eight feet?
I was trying to make a suggestion that was not impeding the view nor the access, but it was just in keeping with what we're trying to do as far as, it was, it was a gesture.
I don't think it's gonna work though, just.
I don't think it's like one.
Aesthetically either, it's gonna work, yeah, and.
Do really anything.
Because when we say native plants, what are we talking about? The stuff that they have next door?
Yeah, the grasses.
But they don't have it immediately next door. What she's talking about is the end, the side number nine.
So it's right in the fence.
Our neighbor there has just, um, buffer or whatever. He doesn't have any vegetation there anyway. So this would be sticking out like a sore thumb.
Is that, is that the same zoning next door neighbor?
Oh, I don't know.
I don't know.
It probably is, I'm gonna.
There's multiple zonings there.
Yeah, I think just, you know, it'll look silly and putting three bushes is really gonna make a big impact.
You don't think it's gonna have a big environmental impact?
I mean, you know, they could opt to if they wanted at some point to put some screening here. Like a bayberry, like one bush like right here, but I don't think it's really necessary for this project. But I would be more than happy to design something if you wanted to do screening along your property line and help you. You know, do something like that. So you don't have to look at.
Is that outside of our ten-foot?
Yeah, they did just put a.
Yeah, screening along here would be nice actually.
Put a fence down there, but yeah.
We're not into fences. We're into trees and strawberries.
Yeah, well, that's the point.
Fences aren't good on all cuts.
So when it gets, you know, when it's done, if they, there's.
Many neighborhood disputes. Can't pass or re-pass.
You know, just for screening. So people don't walk that way. But I, I won't know until the project's done. So we'll try, I mean, we'll try to put something and fit it in towards the property line, but I don't think it should be part of this.
You also have to put five-foot public passing way along.
Yeah, so I don't really wanna do that either. Exactly. So putting bushes there.
It's a classic case.
Is blocking five-foot pass and re-pass. So we're in catch twenty-two here. I think just as is.
I think native vegetation is good, but I think you still gotta.
I like to move forward as it is. Everybody's good with it.
I, I think it's sensible. I think they've done a good job. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want more food.
Every weekend. Brazil weekend this weekend.
Brazil steakhouse? You're doing Brazilian steakhouse?
Uh, kind of. Go check out the menu. Every weekend, different country.
Okay.
That's awesome.
Last week was Japan.
Nice.
That's amazing.
And we'd like them to look out on a bulkhead that isn't caving in.
Soon.
Soon.
Absolute asset to Hampton Beach. Like it's, it's really a good thing for that town.
We're happy there.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Gina, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ed, we're advancing that, right?
Yes.
The next item is, uh, I'm handling for Mr. Pell while he's recuperating. Michael Amass, trustee, forty-four Heath Beach Drive in North Sea. Now, this involves taking out a elevated catwalk and dock assembly that goes out into Woolly Pond Channel. And here is what's existing and the hashed, cross hashed is what is proposed.
Oh, back to this. Yeah, I do.
Susannah Herman and consultants representing the Amass family. Eric, you weren't here several, I guess, back in the fall. I was here. There's been a, the existing structure's been there, I don't know, since the sixties. It's, um, right on the property line. The floats are now sitting on the beach because there's been a lot of accretion of sand there. And so, um, originally she wanted to just extend the catwalk and push the floats out farther into the channel where they would actually be in water. Still not a lot of water, but, um, some water, um, as opposed to sitting on the beach. And the board's opinion was that instead of doing that with, you know, basically the whole shoreline of the entire property being covered, to just do what would normally be approved these days, which would be a six by twenty platform at the end, be more centered on the property. So that's what we're. platform at the end, be more centered on the property. So that's what we're now proposing.
She understands she can't have what she has now, right?
Yes, yeah. That's why she came in and wanted to hear it from the board.
What I'm concerned about here is I wonder if we need a public hearing on this because of the boat traffic here and the distance across the channel.
It's designed to be the same, to extend out the same as the adjoining property to the north?
Yeah, it's nowhere near a third, a third, and a third. Basically, it's six feet and 10, 16 feet and you have probably about 80 feet. I mean, James...
105 feet, right?
Is it over, is it over 100 foot?
There's the Marina Coast Grill, there's the Marina Four, there's just a lot of boat traffic there.
Yeah, but there's adequate, this is a deep channel from...
Depends on what side the channel's on.
No, the, the whole entire waterway is a channel. It's 10 feet of water through this whole entire.
But there's how much room across to the other side of the deep?
The width of the waterway is 105 feet.
But how, but how about the channel?
That is a third.
Because what I'm thinking is two boats in the summer when there's one boat coming in, one boat leaving, and there's that weird like sort of S-turn on the corner there.
But where, where, where our platform is proposed at the end, where the boat, the Amass boat would be docked, it's only, um, it's only a foot and a half.
It doesn't appear that it's any further out from any of the others.
No, no, Eric, this is...
Basically established a pier line already.
This is the boat that's north or east of it and the pier, this is, it would be in this, actually, it's a lot less, you know, it's more here because it's, it's narrow here and then it opens up here and then it stays.
That's a long catwalk just because we have a lot of beach there.
Because it goes upland.
Yeah, the, you can see the high water line.
Right.
And then, right, there's high water line, here's low.
I've been in it multiple times and it's, there's plenty, there's plenty of channel to navigate, even a boat of 20 or 30 or 40 feet.
Even two passing side by side?
Yes, yes.
Because when it says 100 feet width of waterway, my question was depth of channel and width of waterway.
This is like a, probably like a 28-foot boat, so you double, so that would be one boat here, even with that dock there, there's plenty of room to navigate in and out of there.
Can I give you an aerial photograph?
Yes.
That's what we're using.
And, and the whole entire channel here is deep. It's at least 10 feet.
All right, so trustee Pell wanted me to ask the board to advance this. She had no problems with it. So you've obviously been looking at this for a little while.
Yeah, Billy's been in there too, looking at it, so he's...
We all did site visits too.
Oh, good.
Okay.
We're advancing this?
I'd like to advance this.
Yes, please. Thanks Suzanne.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any comments, anything to...
Um, is a gentleman sitting in the back?
I just came to hear...
An observer?
...a bunch of buffers, so I read, I was keeping abreast of what's on the agenda, so I just wanted to keep up on what might transpire in the future, that's all.
Do you have any comments? Do you want to come forward?
Would you like to come forward and...
We're, we're...
I'm not allowed.
Oh.
There's no public comment enough over here. I don't want Scott to get angry if he walks back in and shoots me up there.
No, we'll have an actual public hearing and you can submit all your testimony and at that time we could go through it.
I didn't want to...
Yep.
There's a difference between the, you know, general matters and applications.
I'm just, can we get proposed educated buffers?
Plans, basically.
We were going to have a public hearing, so you could give us some input so we can, you know, craft it in a way that it works best for the, us and for the environment and for the property owners. So we can all have it.
Right, clarification of the blue book.
Yes.
Okay.
The only thing that I have is that they found a parasite in the scallops that potentially could have killed all the scallops in the bay. They don't know for sure if it was the culprit or not, but they're going to do some further investigation.
Right.
I would like to contact Cornell and ask them if we can purchase some more scallops than we normally do for a bigger reseeding in our waters. I think it's something that should be done this year, being that there's a very minimal set of bug scallops in the bay. Most of them are out east in East Hampton, outside in East Hampton Town Waters and state waters out there. So I would like to, you know, get the board's consensus on maybe purchasing double the amount of scallops that we normally do.
I was speaking to Cornell the other day and the current theory is that they were stressed out by the heat, that the, that particular parasite has been around for, since prehistoric times, basically. It's always been in the waters, but if the population is, is strong, it fights it off. But in this case, there's, I guess, some climatic conditions. That's what they're, they're thinking right now, that weaken the, the adult scallops. They found the, apparently found the, some of the parasites in the bug scallops too, so they were able to fight it off because of the, because they're juveniles.
Yeah.
But what was the report on Shinnecock over the light by the Coast Guard Station?
Um, there were scallops in Western Shinnecock and scallops in, by the Coast Guard Station. There was a few that sat there naturally. The majority of them were the scallops that the Cornell had put there the previous year. They survived very well. There was a minimal set of juveniles in the bay this year. The eel grass, the environment was, looked very, you know, very good for scallop setting. The amount of eel grass in Western Shinnecock Bay is almost to where it was in prior to the brown tide era.
Really?
Yes. It's, it's really, you know, really good crops there.
Thanks to the effort of Cornell too with their replanting.
Yes. And us, we did a lot of, you know, work on there and it really paid off. The clams, hard clams are flourishing, but the scallops are the mystery. The only place the scallops did survive somewhat is in Western Peconic, the Cow Yard and Reeves's Bay, Flanders Bay, where the water is the warmest, has the most water quality issues, so I don't, I don't get it.
Well, I know. It wasn't that, wasn't that great this year up there.
No, but it was better than anyplace else.
Right.
But that's why I think a reseeding effort similar to what we did back after the brown tide got us to where we were prior to this die-off. I'd like to, you know, take that initiative again and really up the amount of scallops that we put in our bays and ponds.
What about Bullhead? That didn't do too well?
There was just a few in there. I talked to Sammy Rispoli. He scalped in there a couple of days. There were a few juveniles, very few juveniles, and a couple bushels of mature scallops. We put all the scallops from Cornell that went in Bullhead, went into the eel grass sanctuary that we established in there many years ago, so they're not going to get harvested and they got a safe place for the winter to winter over.
So if the theory's correct about warm water stressing these particular scallops, then it might be best to concentrate on putting in this colder water since we have that, since the dredging took place at the canal, I mean inlet.
Yes.
That maybe we should focus on Shinnecock Bay and possibly some places in Maritza or something like that.
Yeah, we historically put the scallops on the reservation, but for the last eight years we had the rust tide, so we've kind of opted not putting them there because of that event. This summer, we never had an outbreak of rust tide, so we kind of missed our chance to put them in Eastern Shinnecock where the water's deeper and cooler.
Right.
And in Maritza, there are a few scallops by the new inlet in Belleport, natural set, so maybe some scallops in...
Maybe to go Swan Island.
Swan Island where we put them.
The eel grass is coming back very, very strong around Swan Island.
Well, that's a good place then.
That always has been a traditional place for scallops to thrive, so we should try that again.
Okay. I mean, now that the brown tide is somewhat abated up there, so maybe this year we'll, you know, if we get an extra, you know, 100 or 200,000 scallops, maybe we could sprinkle them out between Eastern Shinnecock and Maritza Bay.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Carter Creek?
Right.
Carter Creek is in East Quogue and it is in need of dredging for, you know, flow and environmental reasons. We've done this about, we did this about six years ago, right? We worked something out. We don't have a permit now for this, right? It's expired. But I think what the board has to do is figure out, moving forward, hiring the consultant that is familiar with this creek to get this, because I don't think James has time. We need samples of the whole deal, right?
Do you need plans, update plans, or...
The whole deal. So we're going to need somebody to get these permits for us because it's time.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, so this is what the board, now, the other thing that I, I think is that I, today I had a meeting with councilman Martell and some folks that live on trustee roads and we started the dialogue in terms of how do we get back to sustainability maintaining these roads? Last I looked on the budget side, we were down to like $130,000.
Right.
And that's not going to last long realistically and then it's going to erode the regular side of the trustee budget, which is going to be bad. So we had about an hour and a half meeting today. We got some ideas going back and forth in terms of how do we stem the tide and get back to sustainability here. So the dialogue has started in that respect and, you know, Rick was very receptive. You know, he had, got a lot of good information and everybody's just got to, if they're thinking caps on, it's pretty clear it's an issue, you know?
Well, it has to be made clear, I think, they are trustee roads. They are, you know, in our ownership for the people of the town, but everybody in the town can use them, so...
Public roads.
They're public roads.
Right.
It's used just like that, but we don't receive any revenue from that side of the government.
And they're paying taxes.
Right.
And it's a public safety issue and they gave, you know, councilman Martell some examples of the public safety aspects of it. And most of you know, a few, a few weeks ago, we had a major fire on a trustee road, right? No hydrants and there was some damage done to that road. And they were very grateful that over the last years that our maintenance department did a good job at providing the services and the plowing and the sanding and dealing with the drainage, because before that it was a lot of complaints and a lot of issues. So we've done what we could, but the reality and the situation is that there has to be a more sustainable way to replenish that fund, just the one-time curb cut thing's not working. And we have to get ahead of this immediately and group did volunteer to, you know, to work with us. Today was our first meeting and I'll keep you, you know, posted as we go, but we, we had a good educational session and we'll see where we go. If we all work together, you know, the town, the trustees, the homeowners, I'm sure we could work something out that'll, that'll be sensible for everybody.
There was a gentleman that reached out to me because it's my area, that lives on Little Nyack Path where the fire was. He is interested in pursuing the possibility of hydrants and water on that road. He's looking into it. He's also asking about signage for two-way traffic and a line down the middle of the road. So he will, he's doing, he's investigating a couple of things and then he's going to come in and speak.
That's great, with the board having come in.
So, at some point.
Yeah, that's, there's a, there's a certain dynamic that goes on with these roads. And the reality is, is that, you know, I've come to realize, and I think many of the members of the board have come to realize, that the ones that don't lead to water, that are just historical roads that have been in the trustees' inventory, that have become, you know, heavily inhabited with homes have become a liability to the trustees.
Mm-hmm.
And in, in the interest of public safety and doing the right thing, you know, it takes a lot of man-hours and equipment and salt and sand and drainage projects. It takes money and we're depleted in that restricted account and we need, we need to work something out.
We really don't have the equipment to be in the road business.
We don't.
It should really be in the hands of the, of the highway department, but, you know, the highway department doesn't want to take in substandard roads and, you know, tax their budget.
Millions of dollars.
I, I will tell you...
What if we get it to, if we can get the highway department, get them up to specs to at least like country road specification, maybe they'll take it in.
You know what the reality was, I feel with the conversation from a lot of these folks that were the source of a lot of complaints in earlier days, they're very pleased with where, where we have gotten this to. I think the concern is that we're able to sustain that. And when you're, when you're at $130,000 and going down, obviously, you're not going to sustain that. So they're not necessarily asking for things to be, you know, freeway. They don't want a freeway. They don't want anything like that. They want to at least know that there's a mechanism in place to sustain the good work that we've gotten it to. And, you know, realistically, it's, it's going to be a problem if we don't solve this. And I think with everybody working around the table, we got a shot at it, so.
I reached out to Suffolk County Water Authority to their new construction office. I haven't spoken with them yet, but to see what the situation is, just to give that gentleman some information about water to, on that road.
It's offensive.
To understand extremely.
Yeah.
Extremely.
And I am, down in Eastport, I took a look at the Eastport dock, the pier that's sitting out there and it's in bad shape and needs to be totally taken out and a new, new pier put out. Not a pier, but a dock put out, not an earth-built pier. So I talked to our bay constables who are managing our marine maintenance division and asked them if they could come up with a plan to at least take some of the old structure out so it would save us money when we do go out to build a pile dock, so working on that.
Um, Sag Pond Cut is open and flowing well, has been open for quite some time. Me Cox Cut closed itself naturally last Tuesday on the day that Chesterfield was to have come and closed it.
Perfect timing.
Right.
So Me Cox is now closed, but it's substantially below the, the line on the bulkhead. The Friends of Long Pond Green Belt, as well as the Peconic Bay Keeper have, are both interested in cleaning up the, out the drains for the Elwes, Ligonie Creek, and also the Elwife drain in North Sea. Is that something that you all are amenable to? They've done it in the past, working with the marine maintenance division, in waders, walking through and removing any branches and so forth that might obstruct the fish passage.
Yeah, it was usually the marine maintenance guys goes up there with a chainsaw, cuts up any trees and throws them out of the brook and makes a passage, you know, available for the fish to easily access it.
It's important to maintain it.
Yeah, I think maybe have the marine maintenance, you know, do a quick evaluation and see where, see which one is in most need and send our dump trailer down there and have them fill it up with any debris that could be getting stuck there. I think it's a wonderful thing. I mean, these Elwes are not going to get into the ponds without us helping them, so...
How'd that work out last year, those rocks that we put in to raise the water?
It worked out. They've been there for three years and what happens is the, the rocks, the way that we configured them, it slows the water down and it allows the water to build up just under the road.
So they can get up there.
And it also causes like a baffling system, so the fish can jump from one pond to another, to another and rest. I believe Alex and the Peconic Estuary are going to do North Sea Road this year. They're going to put a bigger culvert there and they're going to put a pond and a pond and a pond, so they'll have a chance for them to, you know, gradually up there.
Progress.
Not one run in, get tired, so.
Okay, very good, yeah. So it's very difficult with what we did that thing with the rocks.
Yeah, the water was inches deep. They would be on their sides and literally the raccoons would eat just about every one that would go through there. So we had a good, and there was a good, a good run there last year. I believe Byron Young at the D E, the ex-D E C person was there monitoring them and he has some kind of idea of how many went up there, so maybe we should have him come in this spring and give us an update on that and run in the, also the run in the Peconic River, which I guess is one of the bigger ones since they've established the fish ladder.
Right.
I know the Suffolk Counties and the D C have been pushing to get the Woodhole Dam and the other dam to the south, earthen dams removed so they can get, the Elwes can get easier access to Wildwood Lake. As you know, in the past, Eric, we've had some conversations with the D E C and the last conversation, they were not going to claim any jurisdiction if the fish got into Wildwood Lake. We do not have that in writing.
No, not in writing.
We had it in verb, verbal.
We'll keep on working on that.
Well, we did come on video. It is on audio and video.
They are, yes, they are.
They are, it is documented.
Who was, who said that?
The, who's the young lady?
Authorized to, to act...
Didn't Chart say it also?
Chart was not very, how would you say, he said it, but he...
I thought he said that there was already species in there, that if, that that was the intent, that they could have claimed it all.
The American... The American eels.
What he stated, yeah, American eel.
The American eels.
Said it's American eel and if we wanted to do that, we would, we could have done.
The only way American eels would got there is somebody put them in there on purpose, because they're not going to get over that woodhole dam.
No.
Not with that twelve to fourteen foot drop that they have there.
But they haven't put anything in writing, but they did come and it's on audio, video.
We'll see if we can get it reiterated.
It's a record somewhere.
Well, they're, they're moving forward on.
We also, the permit, the county needs a permit from us, we own the stream.
Well, that was a conversation that you and I had back when they started this whole project and they actually came and spoke and we had a discussion at one of our meetings and that was the last we heard from them. I mean, there was a letter that you writ, had written and one that I had written the year afterwards, asking them to come and ask, you know, present their plans, their formal plans, because there was a lot of, you know, informal plans that were talked about.
Right. Alright, well, that's next week's subject to tackle.
Proceed with the cleanup though?
Yes.
On both ends?
Oh, sure, sure.
East and west, okay, good.
Has there been any movement on reintroducing the L wives up through the Sag Harbor into the?
That's what, Ligonie.
Yes.
No, I mean further up, through the park, we were talking about.
The Long Pond Green Belt, yeah.
Yes, that's, if that's where.
With the water level being so high, they got up there.
Yeah, they're all the way through.
That whole channel, all the way up to the park?
Yes, so that's what.
Because it was dry when we walked them.
That was when it was, we had the drought for those couple of years, it was completely dry.
Right.
And we said, how do L wives get up here?
Right, okay, good.
It's flowing really well through there, all the way up into the, the first pond that they get to is Long Pond.
Yes.
So all the way.
Very good.
And we, the bridge that was there, we took out.
Talking about the bottom.
Oh, no, sorry, all the way through.
There was a culvert there we had removed and, you know, a bridge put by one of the Cubs, one of the Boy Scouts.
Eagle Scouts.
Yes, that was one of his projects, so yeah, we've, we've taken good care of that L Y run. It's not an annual one, it's, it's weather depending with the water level.
Right, it was a long distance.
Yes.
It's flowing really well.
Good. Anybody else have anything?
I think that.
Okay, so move to close the hearing.
In a second.
Hold a favor.